Please rise and join me in the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda tonight is the appointment and swearing in of two police officers, which is a very exciting night for us. It's also two new police officers, meaning that they're not being transferred, they're not transferring from anywhere else, but we're actually putting someone through the academy, which we haven't done in a long time. And I think also exciting is they're both local guys. So we're very excited about this tonight. So first thing I'll do is the Goring part, which is the reading of the actual resolution, and then we can do the formal swearing ins. So we're resolved to appoint Thomas J. DeCamply and Anthony L. Donardo to the position of police officer grade five, at an annual salary of $45,074, effective July 22, 2019, subject to completion of probationary period of not less than 12 weeks and not more than 52 weeks. I'll make the motion in five seconds.
Set all of them aye.
So we're a little discombobulated, so we're just going to call you guys up individually by the big TV. Don't confuse it.
Tom, you want to come up, please?
He's a good Irish boy, right? So you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Thomas J. DeCamply.
Aye, Thomas J. DeCamply.
Of the village of Irvington, county of Westchester, state of New York.
Village of Irvington, county of Westchester, state of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police officer.
The duties of the office of police officer.
According to best of my ability.
According to best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Next up is Anthony.
Right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Anthony L. Donardo.
Aye, Anthony L. Donardo.
Of the village of Irvington, county of Westchester, state of New York.
Of the village of Irvington, county of Westchester, state of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police officer.
The duty of the office of a police officer.
According to best of my ability.
According to best of my ability.
Congratulations. Best of luck. Congratulations families.
Thank you.
You guys should take the signs up before you go outside.
We'll see you in our work sites soon.
Thank you.
Take care. Best of luck. You know, it's not a straight line, which is.
What?
I said it's not a straight line. You know what they always say though? A lot of times you get 75% of the most. So. So it's kind of a hot spot of work session and regular meeting since it's July and we actually had vacations and everything, we won't be meeting this much. So. The first part of this meeting will be the work session, which we're going to start with the discussion of recycling containers for Main Street, which, you know, we've been discussing for a long time. So I was bored that it was time to move forward and try things, even if we are potentially running into the risk of some contamination. We've had a trial period in the parks, which we have been pretty happy with the results and the lack of contamination. So we're moving on and I think. Yeah. Yeah. Do you want to come up and join us?
Oh, great, yes. Lucas is our student intern, please.
Sure. Lucas, how are you? How are you? Glad you're coming tonight.
So, yeah.
Visual aid.
Yeah, well, I know there, you know, there was a push to place some, and that's what we can talk about tonight, about the number and location. But there was a push to place the recycling containers paired up with a trash container somewhere on Main Street. So I have, you know, we had a little bit of discussion about style and I know they did some test, test containers out in the parks and I guess the reviews back that you heard from, from Ann through GPTF were positive. So the DPW has a unit which is larger and more expensive than the units that were tested out in the parks, but, you know, really from an operational standpoint, they were concerned about how things were picked up and, you know, the process of picking up for them. So the units that they have have a, have a plastic insert inside of it so that they can dump it as opposed to lifting some large, you know, wire basket or anything like that. If you give me just a second, I will give you some visual on what we're talking about. All right. So. The models that they've looked at and they, they have some of these similar styles on Main Street, but the models they've looked at are from Victor Stanley, as you can see here. This happens to be the depiction of the recycling container, you know, with the small hole in the top, which I think is what had worked out in the park fairly successfully. And, and then as far as the markings go, I'm not sure this will give you necessarily the full picture, but. So on this, this is the blue fairly not large band that goes around the, towards the top of the container. So on the previous, if you see there's a, there's a band just beneath, yeah, just beneath the top there. That's where, that's where that gets marked. That's a, it's actually a clear, it's a, it's white lettering with a clear background. So the container itself will be blue, so it would look blue like this. And I do have a picture that you managed to get for us from Scarsdale, something very similar to this.
Yeah, the Scarsdale picture is one. We did move on to the other model that we thought was more effective in our parks, but there was the Scarsdale model that said.
It's close.
Yeah.
So wait, so I'm sorry. So that's the markings on the top?
Right.
And this is the, it's not exact same markings, but this is the model that you gave us a picture of in Scarsdale. You're saying this isn't?
Yeah, that's, that's actually, that is what I wanted to say. Yes, correct.
Okay. So that's it?
Thank you.
I mean, it's, it might vary just slightly, but it's very, it's very similar.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if I understand you. Talking about markings or actual manufacturer.
No, I think the markings that are shown in this particular picture are not identical to what was on the previous slide.
Yeah, no, the previous one seemed to have just. This is the one that Greg is recommending?
Well, it's, we expected out with Victor Stanley, yes. But, I mean, I, I think Greg is certainly.
Okay.
Open to whatever wording.
Well, and then since then, I have to just say that I sent around to the board the photo of what's been working extremely well at Main Street School Parking Lot, where there's a lot of traffic, especially on weekends with the basketball playing and the farmer's market, that is, you know, a wire basket that has two very small holes, even smaller than that, and they say cans and bottles only. And what's good about that is when I split, I tried to explain to you on the email that the county now is encouraging that there be, you know, beverage bottles be what we encourage for recycling public areas that are challenging. Yeah. So, thank you, Larry. Awesome. So that's what I sent around. I hope you all remember I did send it around because, just because that was late breaking, the county's working on this recycle right campaign, and so I've been in communication with them over the last couple of months constantly. And so this, this model, actually Joe has found to work pretty well as well. And, and Main Street School, when you look at it, the contamination's really low. It's really a good public response to that.
So is that what you're recommending for anything that we, that we pair up on Main Street?
I, I, yes. The GPTF would encourage that we go for encouraging people to recycle beverage bottles only, not like your, your wonderful takeout from Jordane's or the sushi place because it's too food contaminated, but just beverage bottles.
Something that says cans and bottles only, or bottles and cans only, or functionally rated, that, that could be on here as opposed to that.
It's true. It's true. We could get painted onto that whatever we want.
The difference that I'm hearing is possibly from the DPW, you know, they like the one that they can open up and pull out the bin and it might be more sturdily constructed. So I can see a lot of arguments why, why they might want to go for that, but I can also see that we should definitely do the functional labeling rather than this, because this doesn't really say the same thing to people. This is much more directly obvious to me, but they don't have to stop and think.
Yeah, right?
I don't think that one or two holes is a big issue. I just think the way you're like this.
I agree with you and that's what I really mean is that the point is that the style needs to work for the DPW because they have to pick them up. It needs to also look well, you know, look well on our main street and match with the trash cans. So all of that is, is not, but what we have found is that it has to be extremely clear to the public that we don't want all their.
I think that wording is excellent because I think this, you know, everyone understands it's not even, at that point, it's not really a question of having to think about the material at all. It's just what is the object in my hand?
I think so.
Because here, I could see them, you know, deciding to crown molesters of like.
Types of plastic.
Tin foil from a sandwich or a pizza or whatever, just. So it makes it much clearer. I don't think you've got a name on.
Your archery, it's really important and I think, I think Joe, you're saying to me, I don't know.
People do think they're doing the right thing.
Yeah.
Recycling bins.
Yeah, because I would see them and think, oh, yeah, well, if I turn like this, we'd never really, really care for recycling, realizing it's possible to be contaminated. I would think that'd be very helpful.
Yeah, as the D, as the DEF explained to me, they used to be messaging everybody recycle as much material as you can, plastic, metal, glass. Now they're, now they're saying recycle the valuable stuff, the clean stuff, which turns out to be beverage cans and bottles. Yeah, for, for a Main Street area. So, and so Larry, there was, there's a lot of back and forth, a lot of different pictures I sent to you, so it was really, I appreciate your staying on track with it. Thank you.
So I have a question. Is that appropriate?
Sure.
So can we get the style containers that the GPW wants with the lettering, cans and bottles only?
I don't know. We're going to assume so that will make something work, but.
I, I believe we can get painted on it whenever we want. I'm pretty sure, I'm 99% sure that they will paint.
Maybe a setup.
Do gals.
Like this stuff's custom made anyway. It's not like pulling off the shelf that would imagine it on.
So can we talk about locations now?
Yep. So in the various exchanges, there was five different locations identified or at least suggested, and I don't know that we're putting five pairs out there. We have to decide.
We'll talk about estimated cost.
Yeah, I mean, sure.
Does it do wording?
So, well, let me, let me just say.
And it's less, less letters.
Yeah. We'll see about that. So these are priced out and I believe. Sorry. That's the trash one. They're about 15, 1500, let's say, just below 1600.
Per can.
Per can.
Yeah, those are the ones Greg, Greg feels will work best for his staff.
And that is with the liner, with the plastic?
With the plastic, yes. Hard plastic.
Yeah. So can we talk now about, what were the locations?
So the five that were mentioned were somewhere near the railroad station. Not sure the exact location, but somewhere in, on the Aster Street intersection with the exit from the platform.
I will say that there are, you know, I.
The Jordane's, which I think there was even a request maybe from them at some point in this exchange in the past. The, where the Aqueduct crosses, probably on the south side, where the bike rack is in that area there, the head of the parking lot.
And we're assuming that the school maintains their own, Main Street keeps their own?
Yes, they do, right? Yes. I don't think Greg has anything to do with it. Does the village pick up the school?
Well, we pick up their large.
Right. The large, the van is a large.
Somewhere up near the gas station, Broadway and Main. And then there was a more broad suggestion of somewhere on the south side of Main Street, but no particular location identified, somewhere imagined in the center of the business district, but I'm not sure.
So what were you saying?
The only, the only thought of railroad is they have, I come off the railroad every night almost with something, and they have, I don't know, on each side, I think three or four dedicated, you know, it's newspaper, you know, they have like the breakdown already. So I'm not sure if it's necessary now, but, you know, if we're going to, you know, only put four in, then, you know, to me that was the one I'd give up because if you have a tiny bit of effort, you can get, yes, it's true that if you, oh, I forgot it, now I'm walking past it and that kind of thing, but to me there is an option there. So if we're going to do all five, it's probably the one I'd cut.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't think the suggestion's been to do all five. It was, I mean, you can, of course.
I think the gas station.
We've been talking three to four.
There's a lot of younger people that hang out there, so I think that's probably a key one. I think Jordane's is the no brainer one.
I think the south side of the Aqueduct crossing sort of helps.
Yes.
Having something on the south side, where I think we'll sort of be incumbent to perhaps find someone that's as excited as Danny seems to be, and I'm not sure whether to do that or not. So they have to figure out somewhere that needs the volume of it, you know, because if you put one. Anything else I could think of is, you know, the block. You know, how close are you going to put it? So the question is, you got the Aqueduct crossing, so between that and down to the rec center, there's, you know, there's two blocks. Is there somewhere on the south side that would actually be appropriate? I mean, what, you know, you've got the, you've got the restaurant, Chantilly Risadas there, right? With the outside, but I don't know if that's.
The pizza store.
Excuse me?
The pizza store.
The pizza store, but that's, that's much closer to the Aqueduct crossing.
Right.
So I was thinking of what's downstream from that.
Revenge, Mark Kievel.
Revenge.
Yes.
It's crossing Jordane's, yeah.
Yeah, they create a lot of, it's dreadful, I think.
One question is, Greg already has cans out. He probably hasn't located where he does for a reason, I guess, that he, you know, and maybe we should give Greg a little bit of authority here to, to locate the, the main thing is they have to be paired. His mom was repaired. If Greg feels that he should do this block or that block, cool, I mean, but they need to be paired and Jordane says, whoa, it's the one. And they really do have a lot in their pants. So I think we're on a group of, and as the mayor said, the gas station is also a bus stop and Broadway location.
We think we're going to give recommendations to Greg and let him come back and say if he doesn't agree with any of them or, because I think we have, it sounds like we have three definite spots that we think we need them and one that's questionable and one we don't know. One more on the south side. So that, it seems that Greg would have good input for just that very reason. But I seem to remember in the past talking about with him and, and the distant past about the station, and everyone thought it's just going to be kind of wasted effort, but because of all the.
Because there is already.
There's already three sets of recycling stuff up on the platform.
What is the kiosk thing that the village is intending to build down there for informational welcome or anything?
Was that going to be at the corner of the library corner? Not, not at the, not on the station side.
Well, maybe once that's built, we'll decide to put something there, but we don't have to.
Or at least signage that.
Exactly.
Welcome to South Irvington and looks and.
Go back to the station and recycle.
Yeah, so I don't think we really have to worry about that at this point. But you know what I mean? We can decide that later.
Yeah.
And, and, and we agreed on Larry, Greg and Joe and Neale and I met months ago and agreed, let's start minimal, because the more pickups you have, the more you have the trucks stopping on Main Street, which is, you know, expensive, annoying, a lot of time, you know, better to put in just the fewest numbers of cans that we actually need. The only thing is no trash cans without recycling cans.
You mean the new round?
No, no recycling without trash.
What?
Yes.
There's going to be more trash cans than recycling cans.
Take away the trash cans that don't have recycling cans.
Really?
Oh, absolutely. No, Nick, am I saying this right? No trash cans, they don't have a recycling can next to them. I would say step them away. Take them away.
That's the ideal theory, but there are many more trash cans on Main Street now than, than the sites that we're talking about.
Yes.
And if we don't, if we take those trash cans away, then.
I think people will, people will go down the block to the next trash can. I mean, people will look for the trash can. They're not going to. In other words, I think we have too many trash cans out there.
Why don't we ask again Greg to just let us know if there are trash cans that are underutilized?
I think back to the old Disney thing where they have one every 10 feet because otherwise people drop it on the ground. So it's, it's, you know, yeah, then we can ask Greg if there's some underutilized one.
I don't want to walk two blocks with my dog, my bag of dog poop.
Right.
But you would. But she would.
I would rather than put it on them.
She would. She wouldn't drop it.
Okay. I, I really, I really, I really feel strongly that people, I mean, we do have more trash cans on Main Street than we actually probably need. However, however, I'm totally going to respect whatever you decide and whatever Greg feels is necessary. I do feel that the principle that you don't have a trash can without a recycling can next to it is, is, is proven to be important. And we've proven in the parks and park events that you often need fewer sets of cans than you think you do, and the fewer you have, the less work you expend in, in, in picking them up, you know, your fewer, fewer stocks to pick up. So, but whatever, whatever Greg.
If you pull the way at a future date, if this is decided, but let's get these deployed.
Let's get this going.
So we'll report back on the fourth location, but I have a few ideas that I heard, but I'll get.
And then anything, if you think that there's places that we were hooked or if you think there's trash cans that are underutilized.
No, these were the, these were the four of these locations, the four hard locations were the ones I discussed with Greg. He was reluctant about the train station simply because he has a serious problem of kind of residential household garbage being stuffed in the trash can down there. So he's a little unclear about whether the, how the recycling would work and whether it would be more contaminated than, than otherwise. I don't know. But, but beyond that, he was.
He's also, you know, he and his crews are out there, so if they have ones like, you know, where it's really, really busy, we can put another one out. This isn't the end all be all here, so.
I'll report back to Nick.
My, my question's related to that. So I think somewhere I saw that there might be a plan to get the companion Victor Stanley trash cans that have the little cover on them to prevent people from dumping bags of household trash in them and only putting small items. Is that, is that, did I read that?
No, you didn't. We're going to, we're going to take a look at that and see from a cost standpoint whether we can do it and whether we may pair them up. I actually have the drawings here of, of that companion with the lid on it and all that.
Are they locked together or are they still two separate?
I think they're separate, yeah.
Yeah, we have them at the corner of Memorial Park right now.
Not the same. Not, it's not Victor Stanley, I wish they were, but they're, there's, there's a look that you would get if you paired the two.
And I think the one, the trash can at the end of the Aqueduct parking lot is one of those, right? Because it has a little lid on it.
The one in the bottom of Main Street.
Yeah, so here's a.
The one at the bottom of Main Street behind the guardrail is, is the older version of the Victor Stanley.
Okay, yeah.
Trash.
So we have a, I think we have a way forward to try this out.
We're very careful taking.
And we'll, we'll, we'll hear back in a couple minutes. We have some, some more data.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for.
100 canned recycled, someone gets a free segment.
Excellent, excellent.
Excellent. Um, Lucas would just like.
Do it with one of us.
We'll watch, we'll watch what type of cans are.
Larry.
Lucas, Lucas would just like to, because we've spoke about it before, super quick inform you of the, what he's doing to reduce plastic waste in, in Irvington as well, so.
So as Ann mentioned, I'm volunteering with the Green Policy Task Force, so that's under Harvard University's local service, it's a summer program, and in that I'm trying to reduce the amount of plastic waste in the village, specifically that is contacting all the food vendors that use plastic straws and asking them to voluntarily reduce or curb their usage of those plastic straws, as well as providing the resources to reduce their other methods of plastic waste, plastic bags and whatnot. So I'm just here to ask you for your endorsement of such a campaign.
That's great. These are the big ones that I see that, because I was talking to Danny, Danny's staff at State of the Day about after hearing about your, talking to folks about, you know, the knives and forks and spoons, and they seem to have had a lot of it, except then they have the stuff that's in the pack with the napkin and the salt and pepper, and that's the one that they hand out the most. And I think that they really don't know where to go yet. I'm sure there's someone vending something like that, you know, with a, with a compostable. Yeah, so they probably need that information.
And I think what I see. And improvement too is I think now they don't just put it in your bag, they're, you know, they're going to give you a bag, they say, do you want a bag? And then do you need anything else as opposed to just giving it to you that just gets tossed? So eight steps.
Very good, though.
That's great. Thank you for doing that.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Lucas.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you so much. Ann, are there still DEC grants available for 50% of the recycling containers?
Yes, those grants are still available and I think we discussed those with Larry that they take a lot of time to get back. But, yeah, but, but the money supposedly does come through after a couple of years.
Yeah, it's just the power along the queue is.
Yep.
Can you actually, can you actually get, what, you 50% back?
For the recycling part of this, yeah, sure. Although I could try to make the case, but I doubt it.
Where are you going?
That this is, you know, the importance, recycling effort to make sure there's a trash can there. See how far that goes.
Next up, we have a meeting with the housing committee. Anybody from the housing community?
Skeletal crew of the housing committee.
We have two chairs, right?
It's July.
So back when we were talking about some changes to the affordable housing statutes, one of the housing committee members kind of suggested, you know, that kind of asked why we hadn't, you know, consulted you guys first, that we kind of, you know, we thought frankly that it was something that was kind of a no brainer and we also thought we had, you know, time, time to change it or improve it. But to me, it did say, why don't we have you guys in to give some update on the state of the housing committee, since we haven't formally met with you in a long time. So, you know, just to kind of hear what you've been working on, what you see your role going forward, who's taking what roles, I mean, it's kind of a, an overall update, you know, nothing, yeah, exactly, checking, nothing specific on the agenda, but. Nothing, yeah, exactly. Checking nothing specific on the agenda, but just really, a meeting with the housing committee, so.
Right. So we've been leaderless and proless somewhat for the last two years, I would say. Two years since Janice became...
Because our first chair did such a wonderful...
That worked.
Yeah, she was...
Yeah.
Janice Silverberg, exactly. She was obviously a good choice for the board.
But unfortunately, we miss her. And so after, you know, I guess during those two years, we were more or less reacting to any needs issues that came up, which was primarily the Wrightview property and the Wrightview property. And then the Donardo property. And we were meeting with Rose Noonan periodically just to go over any new developments there. But that was really pretty much all we were doing. And then after, one of our members, as you noted, became somewhat concerned that we weren't consulted at all about the possibility of some significant changes in the FAH laws. Said that unless we got a chairperson, he was...
But he didn't volunteer to be the chair.
No. And I said, "Well, why not?" So I don't...
He was all said... Most knowledgeable person.
Well, I'm not sure. I've been following this stuff for many years just because I'm interested in that, or to say whatever. But so I'm now the chairperson as of a month ago. Okay, when I send you?
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. So I created an agenda that was about, you know, is my first task. And, but we did have a meeting in June, which Larry came to. And one of the items on the agenda was how reactive versus proactive do we wish to be in terms of the housing policies of the village? I mean, do we want to just wait and see what comes our way, or are we going to go out and try to make some changes? And I think the overall feeling was that we wanted to be proactive. So there was something up. So we want to be responsive to any issues that arise from what the board trustees is doing and talking to, such as the assisted living company, which may or may not still be interested in developing. In Irvington, your plan may be, you know, have the start of a housing fund as opposed to requiring units be built by every developer. And so in order to be involved with that, we really need to know when these things are coming up. So if there was some way that Larry could just kind of, you know, keep us in the loop. And then we can do the due diligence and, you know, study the backup documentation and just educate ourselves on it. But if we, we don't always have time to read all of the agendas of the board trustee meetings. And so it's possible that things are suspicious, which I guess is probably what happened this time around. But we would like to be involved and we would like to have the opportunity to at least form an opinion.
Sure. Let me just ask, because I'm confused now. I thought that the housing fund was only, was it a general purpose?
No, 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 that was mine.
Assisted living?
It's only for assisted living.
Alternate?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to be sure they were clear on that. That was my understanding.
Yes, yes, it is. And for good reason.
Yes.
Sound thought process behind it. But we hadn't heard anything about this beforehand. And we, I guess it wasn't very clear when we did hear about it. We didn't have the details that it was only being considered for assisted living developments. We just suddenly heard that there was a fund being proposed. But, you know, partially that was because we had been meeting relatively rarely and not entirely on top of what was happening. So now we're going to try to be more on top of it. But if you can keep us in the loop, that will be helpful.
Pragmatic and dumb, yeah.
Yeah. And so on the other hand, we are going to be more proactive as well. And we're going to look to meet with representatives of other housing committees in the area. It's very, I don't know if they just created a housing committee, they have a housing task force.
Janice Silverberg and I met with them.
Right, right.
To try to help them get it off the ground.
And they, I believe they did, based on our plan the enterprise last week. And they, and there's actually a good fund, interestingly enough. So Larry said he would get me there, you know, the new laws that they...
And I think, I mean, that's a good count along those lines. You know, if you're meeting with someone or reading something and, yeah, a scar's dealt. That's a great flaw that you think might be applicable to us. And we're happy to have you, correct me, to reach out.
Exactly. So we're going to try to stay on the top of that. I might reach out to Norma and see if she can keep us in the loop for anything that's available from the county. Because I really don't know what's happening on county level in this line.
Rose, can I attend the assisted opportunity committee meetings in, for the county?
Oh, great.
So I hope I will. That's why I had suggested that representatives of our village committee also attend because there are presentations for every meeting by some housing group.
Ah. Great. Maybe you can send everybody's schedule or at least the list that we can...
Yes.
Then we can try to say, at least make sure somebody is attending all of those.
All well, those would be great.
Yes, okay. Okay, very good. So we'll meet with representatives of other housing committees to try to learn what's worked, what has worked, what they're looking to say that makes them really exciting. And we also want to strengthen our outreach to the Irvington community because I think we've just had quiet on the radar for a while. But looking at what some of the other committees have done, Hastings obviously is the gold standard. They have an amazing website. It's called Hastings Affordable. Hastings Affordable dot com. But in any event, it's a multi-page list of all the housing that's available, affordable housing in the village of Hastings. It has a lot of information.
I still have to go through the county process. Any applicant, I'm still having to go through the county process.
Yes, yes.
But it's still, see, I'm interested in this because, you know, the six units that eventually are going to come online from Market Ridge, the Donardo development, Market Ridge, Market Ridge.
Also is Make Ridge.
No, Mark, Mark. I guess for Benjamin Franklin Marker.
Yeah.
Will be against that.
Oh.
Right, I think, yeah.
And that makes sense.
The mile marker. Anyway, so it seems like it'd be a great idea. I've had people asking me about the status of things and I don't know where to direct them. And it's sort of like, my best thing I say is, "Talk to the county." I don't know what the...
Well, it actually is going to be run through the county.
Right.
Same way as all of the other FAH housing is managed.
The Housing Action Council.
Yeah.
Runs, right. They're already, they're already working with her. But she hasn't heard from them for a long time.
We're in the same group.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think we'd also like to, you know, aside from the strict definition of very affordable housing, try to come up with ways of educating current residents or future residents who buy homes in the village which used to be affordable, but for whatever reason, tax law changes, other things, you know, really are becoming unaffordable. And ways in which, similar to the property tax form that we did a couple of years ago, where we tried to educate people on different types of tax incentives that were available. Or, what's it called, abatements, property tax abatements. There's a variety. And so we did a summit in Mar, that was pretty well-attended, I could say. But I'm thinking, you know, maybe energy conservation programs, especially on the state of New York State. I think it was a $250 million effort to convert to cleaner and potentially less expensive energy usage in the state, especially with the climate gas moratorium now. So perhaps there's opportunities for people to buy some, you know, machinery which will allow them to access, let's, energy costs, you know, I think we used to carry across to their homes in some way. You know, I mean, there's a lot of things out there. Some of them are big and some of them are little. But in my case, it's anything on, just, you know. And that's the sort of thing we could put up on a website.
When it comes to the energy stuff, I think both Ann and Nikki are pretty...
Right.
I was talking in that case.
Okay, my wife accuses me of mumbling sometimes. So I have a, I have a low-tongued voice, I think. What I'm trying to say is that Ann Jaffe and Nikki Coddington both have a lot of connections and a lot of background in this. And I think they've both been tracking the new plan signed by the governor and some of the implications. So I'll be good to reach out to them and have a conversation. Ann was talking to me about some stuff like, you know, new generation heat pumps and that kind of thing.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I got a postcard that there's a $500 incentive for purchasing a thermal heat pump. I have no idea, you know, what size, how that works in and if there are other associated huge costs available there. At the same time, but it's worth looking into. So there we are. Well, I did learn recently that there are several roads in Irvington which don't have gas. I mean, there are areas in Irvington that there's no gas, so I wasn't clear on that. It's probably possible.
It's possible, yeah.
Yeah?
I don't know off the top of my head. Propene. I see.
In my neighborhood in Parks and...
I didn't know. I just...
I've been in one of them recently, but...
Well, when I lived in Irvington, we didn't have any gas, so I couldn't...
Right, right.
Now, I was going to say, it was very nice to be asked on it. So, South Park Street, yeah.
That's right.
Great. Well, you know, obviously, email Larry or myself if you guys want to, you know, be on the agenda for a work session or a regular meeting, you have something, you know, even if you want to present something, you hear something, you know, it doesn't have to, we don't always ask you. You can feel free to ask us and we're happy to put you on the agenda as well.
Okay, so if we come up with something that we'd like to propose, I just haven't really cleared out how that all works.
Yeah, absolutely. It's just a part of the email.
Right, it's, it's kind of how it worked, say, with the accessory apartment law. You know, that was an idea that kind of had its initiation in the committee and then it was explored. And we brought in the resources to fully develop the law, like Mary Ann drafting it, you know what I mean?
Right, right. Janice handled all that.
Of course, that's a great idea.
Yeah, right.
That was her background, when she was working.
But if there's something that you find out that's interesting or you hear, even if it's, you know, not a fully baked idea, we're happy to, you know, throw you on the agenda. We'll try to do it beginning so you can leave.
Thank you.
I'll do my best to keep you guys in the loop in terms of our discussion.
Well, you're done. You're done. Thank you very much.
And we're now going to meet by monthly.
Good.
Here's one other thing that I haven't had a chance to bring up because I wasn't at the June meeting. But I don't know if any of you are aware of the fact that the town of Greenburg now has an affordable assisted living committee. It's been going on for at least six months. And the problem is, well, we all know the poll fighter, so you know, it's very freewheeling. And nobody's taking any notes and minutes. And it's driving me crazy because there's a lot of good stuff. I'm not there as a representative of the Irvington housing committee, but they've already established the idea of having a 10% requirement on assisted affordable housing.
Did they pass that?
I think that, no.
No.
No, they've, it's still being investigated, but...
I think they had, I watched, actually, I watched the discussion on the online meeting. No, it wasn't the committee. It was actually the town board.
Right.
And then I followed up and it seemed to be the end of things about six months ago. But maybe you went to that committee and those meetings probably aren't televised.
The committee's meeting, no, it's not. And as I said, it's very freewheeling with no minutes. So none of this is captured as far as the history. But they are now putting together at least a directory of the basic costs. So then they want to get to the next point where the town would be establishing a 10% requirement because of the fact that they're expecting a couple of really big developments of assisted living. But that's something also, I'm not going as a representative of the village committee. So I, I would prefer that somebody be there as a, well, at least a listener from the village.
All right, well, we can, I have windows meetings are, or let us know.
Oh, yeah, I can tell you there's one next week. So in any case. I think the committee is feeling energized with this leadership, so again, thank you.
Yeah, and we are probably also looking to expand. I mean, at this point, there's a lack of us. And we're really going to do some deep digging.
There's a whole bunch of new families in town too that, you know, we're having trouble tapping into. But if you find someone who's interested in affordable housing, it'd be great.
Yeah, so if you, if you hear of anyone.
Absolutely.
So that chat grew up and talked about the affordable housing at that, or me a few weeks ago, I said, "Oh," but now, thank you a little.
But thank you very much for taking the reins.
And I would encourage us to stay for the next discussion because some of our priorities are going to be discussing affordable housing and...
Okay, with the North Broadway?
No, they're, they're doing a review of their priorities, you know, just a little plan.
Oh, okay. All right.
So. Something could involve you guys perhaps, again, the... Next up, review village priorities.
So as I mentioned by email, it's probably a little bit challenging with, you know, just three members here, but...
You said all the priorities tonight.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so the goal is not to wrap this up tonight, it's to just get some initial feedback. Would you prefer the marked-up version or the clean version?
I'd still mark up.
I think the marked-up version is more useful.
Okay.
What's that? I have last year's and this year's.
Always there.
Oh, okay. I have the month's closeout status.
I know, it's not a big deal. Is this an extra copy?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So can, could we just do a quick review of the closeout status of a couple of comments I have just to see before we go to do the items?
Yeah. Do you want the, do you want the status of, or the... No, we don't have copies of that. We're sorry.
There we have it. It's kind of like, you've got a marked-up copy.
Well, yeah, I guess you can kind of see.
If it's crossed out, just cross that out.
Yeah, well, okay.
Where Larry's crossed it out.
So how do you want to go through this more?
Well, I just had a couple of comments on the second page. So on the ongoing initiatives, number 10. I was concerned that we marked the multi, the Route 9 corridor transportation study is done. I know the study is done, but something's fallen out of that now, which is, which I think probably needs to drop down to longer-term goals, which is just Route 9 corridor, you know, what we've talked about in terms of what the village should do or what the village will do with neighboring villages. So that was just my recommendation, that, not the study itself, but something denoting that it's a long, long-term goals to... That's the Broadway lane configuration system.
Right, the implementation of the study essentially.
Effectively, yeah.
Yeah.
And since we do have a traffic analysis coming from John Canning, I don't know if we have to review anyways.
Dr. Lombe, is that a traffic analysis of Route 9 or is there other traffic involved?
Well, Route 9 and the side streets at like a six intersection.
Yeah, five or six, yeah.
And we wanted to get this in place to look at so that we would know. You know, we're one of the laggard villages in terms of passing around a resolution in support of Route 9 corridor study. And in talking with Larry, I guess it'd be fair to say we're concerned that we didn't want to pass something that we had real concerns about without adjusting the language of the resolution to reflect that.
Yeah, right. I think there, I mean, I know I personally have concerns about, you know, the mornings and on Broadway and if we're going to make it, you know, so.
That's what we're taking a look at. And, and any support resolution, I think, I think, not to get too deep into this, but the, the idea here is that it's not a binary thing. It's not we're in support or not in support. I think it's, I think there's a way, and I think there are very good aspects of the plan and there are aspects that are more troubling. And I think we can craft a resolution that's in support of the good stuff and, you know, some, some other language that's a little more cautious about the other areas, so.
And he's pointing at, making sure that we documented our concerns.
Right, but we need to, we need the base information in order to be able to even figure that out.
And you circulated some of that information, didn't you, to the board?
Yeah, but it was very preliminary, so we're still, still working on it.
So...
All right, so I'll drop that down into a kind of a long-term goal to implement that.
And then, yeah, under the long-term goals, just the two quick ones. And maybe this really should wait for the next discussion, but... Number five, basically enhance long-term departmental planning and execution through improved communication with the board of trustees. planning and execution through improved communication with the board of trustees. I feel like the only, most of the time it's not always, it's not always the case, so most of the time we're only seeing them around budget time, so maybe it makes sense that we try to.
Be biannual.
Yeah, something like double that, so we can do mid-year correct, uh, course directions or mid-year reemphasis or, or we care about things that are problematic before, you know, whatever.
Right.
So that would just be, to sort of increase the frequency. And then, number nine, I'm actually thinking number nine shouldn't be a long-term rule, that should be a, I mean, part of it is with periodic review of the mission and work of the committees, maybe that should be looked at more frequently than as a long-term goal.
Well, I think encouraging it to be volunteer and becoming.
Well, I think the whole thing should move into just ongoing initiatives or something. I don't know if you want to even make it a primary focus, but usually should go up above long-term goal, because I think it's, it's critical. We've seen already the, like with GPTM, it's important to refocus their mission and get them restarted again, so it won't be the only case, I'm sure. So that was my input on last year's.
Okay. Anything else on the, well, what's updated for 1920? I mean, there's not, not a heck of a lot added necessarily, so.
Twelve.
Sorry. I do that all the time.
Twenty nineteen twenty one.
Okay, I'll just, I'll keep talking. So number, the new nineteen twenty slash twenty, primary focus five, continue to implement changes to operations to guide and policies that will improve sustainability, efficiency and delivery of services to the public. I put there, because I think it should be primary, that the discussion about making the paperless planning board ARB process go into a primary goal, I think it's, it's been talked about for a long time and we're really at the edge of doing it, but we really have, there's a couple of significant issues that have to be decided upon before we can have it. But for instance, just on the side, I'm sure Larry, I've mentioned this to you, but I don't know if Brian knows, there was a recent application that was coming between, before the planning board, where it had to be resubmit prematurely. The whole packet was costing over $1,200 just to get reproduced each time they had to resubmit, so that's a heavy, I don't want to call it a tax, but it's a heavy environmental burden because that's all paper that essentially is then shredded and, you know, no one uses it except for the final versions. So it seems to me we can address that and become a little bit smarter about, because everything has to be, everything's online in the portal app, I suppose, if you're looking at me with disbelief or.
Well, it's not my issue, but, I mean, except that it may be online, you mean for the members?
Yes.
Uh-huh. I don't think they're going to use it online.
No, no, we'd have to be made, something would have to be made available, but I've talked a little bit about it, so there's a, there's some technology.
Yeah, I know, there's a huge number of it, we have to be submitted.
Yeah, I think they would do, almost out of work sessions.
It's going to get done, it's just a matter of.
Prioritizing.
No, no, it's, it's not a priority thing, it's really, it's, it's, it's a behavioral thing.
Yeah.
More than anything, I mean, we're ready to go.
Exactly, except the boards are, have their own issues, so each board has a set of issues that we need to talk about.
We have to work through that.
Yeah, exactly. So that's why I said, let's bring it up a little higher focus.
Sure.
I know it was mentioned later somewhere, but anyways, I was, I saw that the dark sky requirements got in as a priority, and I think those are lighter weight than we imagined, but to me, that's really kind of a placeholder for other sustainability and environmental initiatives as they come to the surface. A lot of these things come to the surface, you know, unexpectedly. We may be having to respond to some of the new governor's program, for instance, who knows what, but anyways, so maybe there's a way that, where dark sky is a specific one, but also kind of that we realize there may be others that come to the surface that become, that either become prioritized, however you want to word that.
Yeah. We could understand about it.
Okay, so then, now we're into the ongoing initiatives list. I really, number seven is the implemented system of performance reviews for all departments, blah, 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 blah. I'm not sure how much that has moved forward, so I feel like we have talked about it for a number of years, and I think it would be good for village governance if we could move that forward in a more structured manner and come to some way of making sure we do it without upsetting people and, you know, all that stuff. So I, I agree that it is there, but I'm wondering, since it's been, you know, how do we push ongoing initiatives to become, I'm suggesting should that become higher priority, that's my question. I'm sort of seeing these as one, two, three priorities at the same, you know, like.
Right.
Now, when there's time and eventually.
Larry, would you want board input in terms of your presentation to department heads about what to do or how to do it? Would that support you in any way, Sharon?
No, I don't, I don't think I need to support necessarily, if you said it as a priority, then it's an area that I need to focus on.
And I think also, one of the things I always found frustrating in my old firm that I used to work at in my real life, was we didn't have a system that supported it, so we did it in like Excel spreadsheets, and I know we even talked about, I thought we were getting you a copy of it, but, you know, I think it seems less funnerous when you have, you know, kind of a simple program or something too, so I think, you know, looking at software might be part of that. And it's fairly inexpensive software when I lived at it, it does have to be fancy, but, you know, I think if, so, you know, maybe there's a technological.
Excel source, you mean?
Yeah, there, there might be a, a technological way to do it that makes it, you know, you can focus more on the content than the, you know, the actual form itself and that kind of thing, so.
And I think it's good because it would also allow, especially senior employees, you know, they have very specific goals that they're trying to achieve, you know, that they can see. I don't know how you do it now with them, but it's just, you know, not that we're trying to quantify everything, but in some ways having clear set goalposts that fit the, for people. And the one that was missing maybe in this ongoing initiative, EV charging stations, does that go in there now at this point, or is it?
Actually, it probably should be up top. I think the way this was originally set up, as I recall, was that the top area were like the areas that were, you know, and, and achievable and completed and can be completed within the, the upcoming year, you know, realistically. Not that that was a hard rule, but that's kind of the way we set this up.
And we achieved a lot of those.
Right, and, and so that's, that's one that belongs up top, I mean, not because it's a higher priority, but because it's.
It's not, it's eighty percent along the way.
Just getting back to that, remember in our last meeting, you had said that they sort of required you to answer a question of whether we would be charging for it or not?
Yes.
And I was reading somewhere that one way, you know, sort of our concern was if we didn't charge for it, then people would just leave their cars there and they would never , you know, move it overnight. One of the ways to charge is to charge for time as opposed to charge for, for the amount of electricity it's.
Right.
And if you charge them for how much time they're there, then they're more than we will pay to leave them with their charging.
Yeah, I mean, I'll look, I have to look at the model that we're looking at in the software and what it, what it supports, but that's one, good suggestion.
Okay, so my final comment then is that they're kind of associated in the long-term goals. Number one was review of update priorities and track status of village's annual election plan. And number eleven was review village operations to ensure conformance with sustainability goals. To me, they're kind of coupled together because I think sustainability goals was part of the environmental election plan. And, but I, I guess I'm wondering about if the long-term goals, if they're ongoing goals, meaning, isn't it something that really we should be doing now and tomorrow and next year or not, rather than let's start in three years?
Right.
So that would be my suggestion is just to, as a kicker, is to put it under ongoing.
Almost keep one, get rid of eleven.
Yeah.
That is true, up to the bucket of boxes.
Yeah.
Seems fair.
All right.
And those are good suggestions, and, you know, when we have our full board back, we can.
Well, have a new, you know, revised draft or something.
That's very helpful, by the way.
Yes.
Larry, I would also just say for, for the area of primary focus, what was five is now two, because we've, you know, succeeded in crossing off some of that, that public such in the regulations for the indoor suite and accessory apartments and public such availability. One of the reasons I used to ask the committee to stay is there any role that you think is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. But I think there, I think there's, there's just some basic stuff on our end that we could initiate, but in terms of publicity, but, but certainly any support from the housing committee, you know, ideas on how to publicize or whether they can incorporate that into any of their information that they put out eventually.
Maybe they could do something like some of the other committee, village committees do, which are have a couple of pages on the village website, you know, Irvington NY slash Fort Los.
Right.
You have that.
They have a spot and it was used primarily to kind of recap the, the large symposium that they had a couple of years ago.
But that's a few years down the road now, so.
Yeah.
Right.
But it can be, that can be updated, sure.
Do those applications exist in information?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah, I mean, the information's all available.
Should we even post them? Can we scan and post the pages on there?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're available as part of the building department information, but we can highlight them somewhere else. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, definitely.
Just start, Larry, thank you. Now, now, yeah, now, now we're about to regulate, we don't get to leave now.
What's your preference as far as?
I think we just there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I'm, I'm going to probably swing around a little, so I can go back to people maybe.
So the only announcement I have is check over $25,000 per village policy. I'll be assigning $120,843.75 for Tom Bucci construction from various projects around the, the village, council, capital, water in general. The, it's broken down as $96,075 is from the, the fallsy pond dam repair, $16,068 water department repairs for different claims, $8,700 from PPW work, that's three different claims, and that's for work done in the past six months.
Yes, I'd like to thank Larry President for doing that great, and I think it helps you to see that my energy was supported, and that's not just saying it's just three different things.
Yeah, that was great. Anyone else have any further announcements? It's kind of funny that we're in our, any big announcements, but it's summertime, it wasn't easy. Otherwise, we'll move on to correspondence. This is actually, this is correspondence that we actually mentioned last time at our board meeting, so I'm not going to actually read it, but we just wanted to make sure it was officially entered into the record. It's, basically, it's a letter from the estate of Stanley Rupenzo, who owns a 76th Road Broadway, basically asking for time to review the pending of legislation, because he has plenty of time because we're still meeting until September at least.
That's the Maxon property.
Oh.
Yeah, and that was, that was the letter that was handed to you in person, but we just put it on the agenda.
Yeah, just so that makes it in the record.
On the record, yeah.
Next up is public comment, that's not related to the public hearing. So does anyone have public comment not related to the public hearing?
I have a question. My name is Danielle, I'm just, I read in the paper that they were thinking of opening, is it Madison Park, to the public and, you know, allowing dogs and all that, I think you mentioned that at the last meeting, dogs, scooters, bikes, whatever. Is there a reason, it seems like they have a big concern about trash and all that, I, I, I don't know, is there a reason why you want to open that park while we have the other park that's open? It is nice to have something special.
They had, I think, six, how many meetings did they have where they had a public comment speaker? At least four. At least four, yeah, there was four or five meetings that they said, come talk to us about the recreation department, the park usage, rules, whatever you want, and the overwhelming response was, we want, we want a lot of dogs in Madison Park, do you want to allow scooters and bikes in Madison Park? And we don't see any reason why Madison Park should be only for village residents. So the, the, the ARP Act Recreation Park Committee heard all this, and they're going to give us a recommendation, and then the, the board of trustees can do what they want.
But Brian, to clarify that, the dogs would still be unleashed?
Dogs would have to be unleashed, right.
And the bikes and scooters would be allowed only after the updates to the walkways?
Correct. The wide walkways have to be widened because they're not widened enough now to allow this. But a lot of people were saying they don't have places to teach their kids how to ride bikes or ride scooters and that sort of thing, so that was part of it.
Come up to school yards on the weekend.
They can do that too, but people have asked.
These are safer and level.
People have specifically asked, and the reason, one of the reasons we never let bikes, the fact that it wasn't that wide, was also that there's a big hill going down, but people said, well, we know we have a two-year-old that's learning how to ride a bike, we're going to walk down to the flat park, and most of it's flat, so, you know, I think that that's, you know, we're open to, you know, responding to what the public wants. So if there's a huge public backlash now and it's, it seems that most people don't want it, it was, I think it was almost unanimous that the people that, and they have well-attended meetings, they were there.
Right, but I would add that our pack, you know, is still studying the issue, but I think our, that has asked for some documentation from us, and they'll make a recommendation, and then we'll take that into consideration.
Right, so it's not, there's nothing's done yet, it's still going.
Wouldn't they have to look at much higher insurance if you're allowing scooters and bikes?
No, well, actually, once, once the insurance company said your pathways are too narrow, but once they're widened, should be, there's no change.
I think that's a lot of that sense.
Okay. Any other public comment? Otherwise, I'll move on to the consent agenda, which is we're going to take out item E, which is the budget transfers and modifications, we get Brenda to, that was after, we potentially voted the rest of the agenda generally, except if anybody has questions on that. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, if I can get a second.
I'll have a favor.
Okay. Next up is the approval of 2018-19 budget transfers and modifications, Brenda?
Okay, we had our revision, it was actually, it's a penultimate, it's in the, on the reverse side of the modified budget transfers. It was from contingency to these overtime.
Right.
And.
Big number.
I have to say, all in all, considering that they've had a lot of accesses due to illness and just also retirements, it really wasn't that bad. In, within the context of, you know, what's been going down there was lack of manpower. So these were just transfers that were done to bring the budget back in line for year and transfers, and if you have any questions on any other ones.
I have one question, just for Larry or you. Number three, the contingency for, to the library repairs, are these are just, these are not repairs that are recoverable for insurance filings or anything?
No, we did receive a recovery for about $25,000, that covered all that repair work due to the leak and the mold situation, that was all covered. They just were over budget in the general repair line and.
Okay, this was one of the, this was.
Is on recovery, right.
Yeah, not recoverable.
And then the number four, what was, why is the minus sign there?
Um.
Because to me.
Let me see here.
Is that?
Right, I think I put it there in.
That's just a dash.
No, no, why? No, 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 there's no, yeah, it was from contingency, yeah, it is a typo, it's from, it's a negative.
That's.
It was you thinking on the paper.
Right.
This is negative contingency.
Yeah, yeah, okay. What's the negative, negative numbers you're adding to?
And I'm just curious on number seven, so we were under budget on the station, Road Colbert, so there's money that was still available, because it seems to make sense to turn that over.
And it was a symbol of purpose, a symbol of problem usefulness, right.
We're closing a line from 2013 from the elevator, lot.
Yeah.
That seemed to be, it's a lot more.
Yeah, we, we had, we had plans for a small mini elevator, but it, it no longer makes sense, so. sense, so.
Yeah. Town money, root, town money?
Yes, pretty much. Results without the following bunch of transfers for fiscal year 2018-19 as detailed below. Make motion, I got a second. Second, all in favor?
Are these the end of the transfers, Brenda? Do you think there's...
No, I don't have any others. We had some interdepartmental ones, so it really settles up from one line to another within the departments.
Yeah, right.
So, those are all completed, and then these are the ones that were modifications of the contingency. I don't see any more.
So, now we'll continue the public hearing, consider local law, meaning the Irvington zoning code to create the North Broadway mixed-use district. We did receive one piece of correspondence, but I see Leola Blotman's here tonight, so I'm guessing he brought her speak to have me read, but if anyone else would like to speak before we, before or after the other piece, uh, now would be the time. Again, we're still listening. We plan on continuing to listen through the summers if it's slow, and we're not going to vote on anything until at least September, but, you know, we want to continue to hear from the public, either via email, like Mr. Blotman, or, you know, in person or handwritten, however you like.
Our plan is still to, in a work session, go through public feedback that our, Brennan has made a list of, right? And then we'll discuss that before, actually.
Will this official come up here?
My name is Leola Blotman. I live at 57 Riverview in Irvington. Um, basically, I have sort of just found out about this and sort of going through the history of what I can find, and there's a couple of things that sort of concern to me. The first is that the southernmost properties are very much part of residential districts. There's around 20 or so properties that are either immediately adjacent or across from the Strawberry Lane right-of-way front of them. And so, you know, in particular uses like hotels, restaurants, which generate most of the traffic on weekends and late at night on weekends, days, seem very inappropriate for a residential neighborhood. I put forth a possible solution to that, which is to take the solution to people's concerns for being too close to Broadway and also apply them to being too close to Strawberry Lane, you know, either for the buildings and the parking or perhaps, you know, different setbacks for both of them, but that, you know, we could create some kind of buffer zone between any potential large-scale development and the residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Great. So, you think, should we talk about that at all?
Sure. We do every month, sir. It's our meeting.
I was thinking about that, and I was thinking, you know, the, a lot of the issue, I mean, there's a noise issue, but there's also, we've heard a lot about the traffic issue on Strawberry Lane, and to me, the, you know, you could have something like the Maxon property required to have Broadway opening and not use Strawberry Lane, so that would cut down on that traffic issue, but not necessarily the noise issue. But I don't know about what you do about the...
The habit house.
Habit house.
The habit house issue, yeah.
My concern about the setback getting too large on that, on that Strawberry Lane side, and I can understand the rationale, is that there's nothing left of the property. So, it seems like...
Demand some property.
In particular, yeah. So, it seems like if you were to actually say that the development would require Broadway access, maybe that solves a lot of the other problems. I'm not sure it does or not.
I think that's an issue.
Yeah, I think we have to talk about that one. Because, yeah, I think, I think that the problem is that it, if you put it back, especially, you know, even 100 feet, kind of cuts that property almost in half, it makes sense.
It's not built in there.
And I guess some of the things now would be a violation potentially, so...
And I think it was, one of the goals was to, it, it wasn't so much to get rid of what's there, but, you know, to zone, to reflect what's there.
Exactly right.
It's very different from what's there.
Exactly right. So, I think it's something we have to discuss as a, as a board and see if there's any kind of, I think, I think that one is the one where you could require, you know, kind of access to Broadway, because that's to be created on it. I think that would actually be a big period for that.
For everyone, oh. And for property, safety, access, safety, in and out of the property.
Yeah, and I think actually, for them frankly, I think it'd be, you know, rather than having to go all the way up Strawberry, down around Riverview, you know, to be able to access, you know, Broadway would probably be better for their tenants than everyone else anyway, so that one seems kind of like a win-win. I think part of your letter you didn't get to was just about, talking about crap, traffic light, noise, all those kind of things. I think a lot of that, what, what this will allow is, and that is by special permit, so those things would definitely be studied for any project that was proposed, you know, because we, it's, it's hard to kind of, to look at each, each use now and figure out what each one would be. Like, if you say, "Well, I have a hotel, but it's only three hotel rooms," like, okay, you know, versus, so I think that while we're kind of considering it, one of the requirements of the special permit is that it doesn't increase traffic if the actual, or it doesn't increase traffic substantially or if something, there's a, there's a kind of a catch-all in there that, you know, you have to be able to kind of meet that pretty high bar.
Oh, yes, it's increase it in such a way that it can't be mitigated in a way.
Right, so, for example, on the Maxon property, if you could say, if we're just putting it all on Broadway, it probably mitigates some of it or, you know, a lot of it.
Well, will not, will not result in a significantly increase in traffic above present levels that cannot be mitigated.
Right, so I think it's, it's kind of almost the, the catch-all way with putting it in the safety and special permit process, but...
Regarding the setbacks, you know, I looked at the state's analysis, and she seems to draw on 50-foot setbacks around at least a bigger bid than the maximum, and Maxon and the habit house. And so, you know, the reason why I came up with those numbers is because it looked like they could get the car coverage and the lot coverage that they were looking for even with those setbacks, and then that's why I added these, second, these height of parking that is a more acceptable use closer to Strawberry as...
It's sort of looming, is...
In, in particular, I think, the Maxon property would have more difficult issues than the habit house.
Yep.
But in neither case, theoretically, they have a requirement to have a 75-foot setback to the front of the property and its building department's determination. I don't think, considering with the habit house, I think that if you establish that the front is the Strawberry Lane right-of-way and increase that from 75 to 100, you're really there in terms of protecting light pollution and noise pollution to a large extent.
We'll definitely consider that, Mary Ann, you know, on the list.
Yeah, no, I think I found a letter very helpful.
One question.
Sure.
If they did the 100-foot setback on the property that you're saying wouldn't be buildable, would it be buildable for a single-family home, which would be in keeping with the area?
At the moment, it's not a committed use.
I'm about to speak, Larry.
Okay.
Who's next?
So, that was a good segue because, um, Rocco Rizzolo, President of Irvington, 120 North Broadway Tenants Court. A lot of my neighbors have come to me and asked me, "Is this not going to be zoned for single-family houses?" I know that's what it's zoned now, I think it's 1F40. And I know when Carafielo was looking to sell it, that there was a developer that wanted to put six one-family homes, five or six, depending upon the topography. And frankly, at the time, we were not, you know, in objection to that. I know there were, I didn't think that was the right, right use, but from a standpoint of taxable income, so taxable, tax coming from those properties and the relatively low traffic in and out of that, that particular space, obviously talking primarily about the Carafielo property. I'm just at a loss to be able to tell them why it's, it's, it's not in here.
I think the main reason was we thought we wanted to preserve that look. One of the things people kept saying is, when you're driving to Irvington, you notice Irvington, we have this wide open, you know, you kind of come past the, the co-ops, and then we have the wide open expanse of lawns and, you know, whatever else. It's, it's like a marquee open area. I think we wouldn't have necessarily noticed that that was destroyed by the six homes, which sounds like, oh, six homes, it's not going to be, the topography, when they drew it, basically flattened the hill and had basically ski slope parking.
No, what it did was it, is it made like a loose trail.
Yeah, it was like...
To be able to, to get up the hill, and that's what prompted years ago, a lot of this, a lot of this concern. It wasn't just destroyed by the...
So, the only, the only video housing now is kind of multi-family, but also...
Attached, single-family.
Attached, single-family.
Attached, yeah.
Which is kind of, and again, the reason, the rationale behind that was to keep open space there as opposed to potentially filling it all.
I still don't see, I, I hear what you're saying, but in my mind, I'd rather look at five, five homes than single-family or, or, you know, what's going on at, at 30 South.
Right. It's not to say the board shouldn't, you know, consider that as an option.
Right.
That was something that the comp plan committee looked at specifically.
The comp plan committee didn't want to have it, so that was, I think that was the best announcement.
I think the recommendation was that it, it was a specific recommendation, not sa... It had different uses and said not single-family, not attached, single-family.
If we go back to this board, we kind of decided we want to keep it more open by making it 1F40 rather than 1F20, and that was kind of how we were...
I just think to, to remove us from the opportunity for a developer to put, you know, houses on a 1F40 scale, frankly, you know, there's 88 families. I know the, the comp plan committee or the, yeah, the comp plan subcommittee, and I've spoken to a couple of them since, and they're not entirely sure that exactly, you know, what has been forwarded was exactly what they talked about, but that's not, that's not really what I'm here to talk about. I do have a, a huge number of families that would rather have, instead of, you know, any one of the other, virtually any of the other options, would rather have just single-family homes in that, in that space.
Okay, so we definitely, we're definitely going to consider it again.
There was one of the issues.
I think we just have to say, are we willing to lose that as a big open space? Because you could make it a plan where the houses are burned down and that's just, that big lawn's gone. I think that that's the, that's what you potentially...
You know, the, the design that I saw for, for the houses maintained that, what do they call it, the Broadway buffer?
Yeah, it did, but then it was, it was basically, it looked, this looked like a giant parking lot because it was all roads, but I think that's...
Well, that's the beauty of, you know, site plan, you know, approval by the, the planning board. They're not going to allow anything that looks like, like that.
Well, that's precisely why it was stopped, because the entryway had 17-foot-high retaining walls to get in from Broadway.
Which is the only way you could do it because of their particular...
Because of their site constraints.
Well, we know that those retaining walls are no longer allowed, so...
Well, it wouldn't have passed.
They would have to be stepped now.
Is, I, I guess you're being funny.
No, no.
I would have thought that, I'm sorry, Rick, I would have thought that as being a joke because I don't think anything 17-foot-high, if terraced or not, is, the impact of that driving through, it's almost...
Once again, we don't know, we only saw one plan.
Sure.
And, and there's six and change in acres up there, so four houses, if there were stepped backs.
You got to subtract all the resource out.
Originally, they wanted, because if they hadn't been grandfathered in before the new zoning, so they were trying to put in 10 or 12 houses originally, and they, they had to take all the slopes off, so they were around six.
Did they know that it was 1F40?
Yeah, they, they understood. There were, there were other issues. The slope was a big problem, and they were trying to, because they couldn't achieve standard lots, they were trying to do a cluster and couldn't really do a cluster.
The short answer to your question is that we have, will consider single-family homes.
Yeah, they're on, they're on the list of issues to discuss.
Right, that's something else that's kind of, we want to put that back in.
Thank you.
Because to me, if I was a property owner, I wouldn't want to give it up either, you know, because it's...
Exactly, yeah.
Yes.
Why would there be less of a problem with clustered housing? You have the same problem getting up, and you have more cement for all the cars that have to park. It was just as bad. Any condo that I've ever seen where they say you have more open space, the open space is cement or blacktop.
Housing, though, cluster housing is just smaller lot size requirements with more open, shared green space.
I meant attached.
No, that's, they don't, they're not, the cluster is not just, not attached.
Not attached.
Okay, I'm talking about when you meant it should be attached.
Yeah, now, the only thing that we know of right now, that I know of, that's attached single-family is actually Marker Ridge is the only instance that I know of right now, right? It's like two single-family houses together that share a common lawn.
So, you would have twice as many people living there and twice as many other developments, I think, are there.
Would fit that same definition?
I think they would, they, and they came in, well, this was before my time, I believe they were approved as, as clusters, kind of, I think they were approved as clusters.
Richmond Hill or something.
I think Richmond.
Both Richmond and Killpoint had those, that exact description.
Yep.
But not all of them, it just...
Some section.
Yes. There else?
More, more road, more parking. So, it wouldn't be a beautiful one.
I think it all depends on the, on the plan, like, you know, it's right set.
In addition, in addition to which, there are limits on how much can be paid. This has pretty strict limits on how much can be paid. I think it's, I think it was 5% above the coverage or whatever, so you can't have big parking lot.
I mean, I think that one of the things is almost any use with a great plan probably works, you know, and that's the hard thing is, is, you know, always trying to figure out, almost like the worst-case scenario for each, each use, I think is what we have to kind of focus on.
My name is Tom Barry. I'm a vice president of board in 120 North Broadway. In that complex that you're talking about, there's a three-family, I believe it's attorneys in there on the Carafielo property, closest to 120.
The one you're, how, the, like a house.
Right. Is that going to be, or is that coming down for, to make room for the other homes that are going to hopefully put, be put in there?
This would, this would, this is, obviously, this is zoning change, so there's, nothing would happen. It might allow things to happen, but, you know, there'd be no plan attached to this. That's part of the reason we want to do it now, because there's nothing being done, so we're kind of, we're not responding to a plan, but, you know, what would happen, you know, you don't know, it depends what someone proposes, but...
And secondly, there's a house...
Property that isn't that one.
Well, first of all, it's, it's their own separately, they're owned by two different entities, and, you know, what would likely happen is if the board rezones and that property's covered by that rezoning, that would continue to exist as a non-conforming use. It doesn't mean that it comes down, you know what I mean?
No.
No, if one developer bought all of it, that's a whole different story, because that's, that's not in our control.
Okay.
Anyone else?
In other communities where, basically, you know, a developer comes in, buys a cluster of lots, and then gets a variance to essentially ignore those things. Does that happen here? Has it happened here?
Yeah, it, it could, if you could combine, you could combine lots and things.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a variance.
It wouldn't be a variance, it would be more like combining lots and you could...
You'd have to get some, you'd have to get subdivision approval for that.
Yeah.
It'd have to be approved by the...
Marker Ridge did kind of a combo.
They combined the two areas.
They did, yeah, yeah.
Just definitely possible. Anyone else? Hopefully, we'll see you all back in August with more comments, send your emails. You know, I think these are all helpful, you know, hearing, one of our big, this is big things, this is a big change, obviously. Um, it's an area that we've spent an inordinate amount of time responding to plans from developers, uh, in the last, say, ten years. Um, so, you know, we want, and say, hey, I have an idea. We say, well, we've talked about this. We've got a lot of community input on this and this is what we came up with, the comprehensive plan with, uh, additional community input. Uh, and now we have new zoning that we hope will be, you know, economically viable as well as acceptable to the community, or embraced by the community. So that's what we're trying to get to. Uh, we thank for all of you for being here on a hot summer night to listen and/or talk. Um, and we can, hopefully continue to hear from more of you. So we will continue the, uh.
It's October the third in August, right?
We vote tonight.
Can we request that you not make a decision in September since half the community's gone all summer?
It's probably not in September.
You mentioned September.
We said at minimum. So that, we, you know, we'd have that in May, June, July, August, and September. So we might, we might say the last, we're going to have two meetings in September. We might say those are the last two public hearings and then we'll have one more public hearing in October and then vote. I don't even know because we might have huge changes through the end of the year or through next year. Who knows? That's, that would be the absolute earliest. We'd probably second meeting in September.
And, and this, this board still needs to meet to discuss the various input that they heard. I mean, they, they can't meet in private. They meet in, at a public work session and they'll debate amongst themselves with the community listening if they want and come up with revised zoning or not revise it. I don't know what they'll do, but that still has to happen. So.
We're a ways away.
Yeah, I mean, that, that could happen in the summer possibly or in September, but, you know, after that, then there would still be the public hearing on whatever else they change. So.
If you don't want to get into the holidays, then I won't pay attention. Um, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, uh, search areas. Authorizing tax search area settlements, one oh eight Main Street LLC. Let's read this here.
It's a fairly nominal one. If you consider thirty four hundred dollars nominal.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, whereas petitions have been filed by one oh eight Main Street LLC challenging real property tax assistance out of Greenberg's assessment role pursuant to subject property in twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen property years. British District's actions are now pending Supreme Court questions. Sir, as a time petitioner, I reached mutually agreeable resolution. Now therefore, the Village of Irvington is authorized to effectuate a settlement commiserate with the following terms, uh, from twenty sixteen, a reduction of two hundred and fifty thousand, twenty seventeen, a reduction of ninety thousand four hundred, twenty eighteen, a reduction to a hundred and six thousand two hundred. The Village of Irvington's share of the refund is three thousand four hundred ninety one dollars and twenty five cents. I'll make a motion if I get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is a search area from fourteen Grinnell Street. Um, uh, where petitions have been filed by Mary Ann Movic, challenging real property tax assistance out of Greenberg Assessment Role pursuant to subject property twenty sixteen to seventeen, um, on fourteen Grinnell Street. Um, now therefore, the Village of Irvington is authorized to effectuate a settlement commiserate with the following terms, from twenty sixteen, a reduction of seventy eight thousand four hundred sixty dollars, and twenty seventeen, eighty six thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, the village's share of the refund is one thousand two hundred ninety one dollars and ninety cents. I'll make a motion if I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now for the controversial one, which is, I thought there were people outside.
I know she can.
Yeah, exactly. Scandal. Um, she's here. She's scared. She's sick as a dog to push this through. Yeah. She gave us the whole sob story, so we approved this. And she waited, there was only three of us here. Uh, this is so bad.
All right, all right.
Result of early retainer agreement twenty nineteen twelve with the firm of partnerships Murphy and Lammers LLP providing an hourly rate of two hundred, about one hundred and fifty five an hour for basic retainer services and two ten an hour for services outside of the basic retainer. Authorized the mayor to execute study agreement. I'll make a motion if I have a second. I can, all in favor, retire. Mary Ann, all kidding aside, you do a fantastic job. We're glad you decided not to retire and stay with us. Then another big meeting.
And I'll tell you, the only reason I have to tell you is, which everybody's pushing me. I don't know anybody. It's, I really love working with, with this board and with the village. I really love it.
I forget about it.
Believe that, but yes.
And I've worked for a lot of the village.
They must all be really bad.
You can say something.
That's true. And Larry, do you need to sign it tonight or?
Uh, we can, yes.
I was having it.
Yeah.
Someone was in the packet here.
You don't reject me signing your home? I guess it's not his copy, I guess.
Well, again, unless you have two, one who we are in love with.
Sure. We scan it and throw it out anyway.
Oh, gee.
Yes.
I'll do it in blue pens so it looks, you know, very authentic.
Yeah, it's blue too, so we can.
Very nice. Well coordinated. So, you want me to give you a copy and give you a copy?
Sure, thanks.
Perfect. Bond resolutions. Did you want to say anything about these brand now where they stand on their own and Larry?
I think they can stand on.
Larry gave you a great little cheat sheet to read. That's right there.
Yeah, I mean.
We're not.
No, the resolutions, you know, the, the real work was done when you did the capital budget.
Right. Now, this is just lining up the years of use.
Exactly. So, I mean, you can, you can analyze these from now until the cows come home and it all just.
I can read them. By the time Connie and Jonathan.
It'll match.
Whoa, whoa, I wouldn't put those together.
It didn't play too well. It didn't play too well.
I didn't mean it that way.
Actually, me too. Um, so I'll just read some bond resolutions before we get in trouble reading bond resolutions.
Yeah, so they're all, they're going to be, there'll be six separate resolutions. The mayor will ask for motions right now.
Or you have.
On each, on each one separately, please.
Sure.
Sorry, but, uh, yes.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve a bond resolution dated July tenth, twenty nineteen, authorizing issuing up to one hundred sixty one thousand of serial bonds with a maximum maturity of five years. I'll make a motion if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion, I'll make a motion to approve a bond resolution dated July tenth, twenty nineteen, authorizing one hundred sixty one thousand, serial bonds with a maximum maturity of ten years. If I can get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve a bond resolution dated July tenth, twenty nineteen, authorizing the issuance of up to two million one hundred ninety thousand of serial bonds with a maximum maturity of fifteen years. I'll make, uh, make the motion if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He just wanted to do the one with Matheson Park in it.
Yeah, exactly.
See that?
Loriot. Uh, motion to approve a bond resolution dated July tenth, twenty nineteen, authorizing issuance up to two hundred ten thousand serial bonds with a maximum maturity of up to twenty five years. I'll make a motion if I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve a bond resolution dated July tenth, twenty nineteen, authorizing issuance up to two hundred five thousand serial bonds with a maximum maturity of thirty years. I'll make the motion if I can get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve a bond resolution dated July tenth, twenty nineteen, authorizing issuance of up to one hundred twenty thousand of serial bonds with a maximum maturity of forty years. Make a motion if I can get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I was thinking.
Well.
Yes, I was.
You thought it was.
Thinking it was.
Everybody brought me a lot of water.
I thought we were going to have to take care of this.
Next up is volunteer appointments to the zoning board of appeals. Um, we, uh, received two new, uh, appointees with impressive resumes and, um, come, come highly recommended by the current CPA. So happy to have some new blood, um, as well as, uh, John to be.
Yeah, which is really a formality.
Because he's been acting.
He's been, he's been filling in permanently at the zoning board. In fact, I think the zoning board chair thought he was appointed as a regular member already. So we're appointing him as a regular member. There is a vacancy and, uh, the other two are, are new, as, as the mayor mentioned.
So resolved to appoint John Dimling as a member of the zoning board of appeals for term to expire December twenty twenty three and resolved to appoint Rosie Herbert to the first alternate of the zoning board for appeals to term expired twenty, resolved to appoint Judge Harsher as a second alternate to the zoning board of appeals for appeals for term to expire December of twenty twenty. I'll make a motion if I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again for your sir.
There's one, uh, one added item. Um, and, uh, I, I quickly outlined it late this afternoon, so I apologize for the late addition, but, uh, with the reduced number of meetings in the summer, it's better to get this moving along. So this is a.
Interchangeable agreement between the county and us for, for radio.
It's for, yeah, radio equipment that will be, uh, housed at the Irvington Firehouse. Um, and it will be serving, serving, uh, emergency communication, emergency responders on the Governor Mario Cuomo Bridge and the Hudson River area generally. Um, and, you know, the fire, fire chief, uh, past and present and, uh, are supportive of this. And the, uh, agreement took a bit to, with the county attorney going through it. I needed to get some answers from the firemen, which I was a little slow on getting, but we got the answers. Answers are satisfactory and, uh, would like to.
Add to this.
Sorry?
Who staffs?
It's not a staff. It's, it's automated.
Oh, it's just a repeater?
Yeah.
Or automated signaling?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the county's responsible for the maintenance.
Do we get a dollar?
The installation and the maintenance.
Yeah.
As an aside, I don't understand anything about this.
Yes, it was late though. It was, it was probably about.
It wasn't getting late.
Well, it was like four o'clock.
Yeah.
It's pretty, pretty late before a meeting, but, yeah, it was.
I know.
You got it.
So I'm, I'm just gonna.
Take exactly what's on.
Check your spam.
I don't know.
Now I see it. It came in at six sixteen for me.
Wow, you've got a big lay.
Five four, five forty seven. I'm sorry. Yeah, it was, it was even later, so. Brian responded at six eleven.
I think I did.
I couldn't.
I was on the train.
I did, sorry.
You're fine, okay.
Um, but I will, uh, I'll just make a motion to approve the permissible agreement between, uh, Irvington and Westchester County, and Westchester County for emergency communications equipment to be housed in the.
Irvington Firehouse. Sounds authorized me to sign it.
Authorized, uh, village administrator, Laura Schopper, to sign.
Yep, that's it.
Kevin, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate the question.
Uh, reports of boards, standing committees and officers, trustee liaison reports.
I don't really have anything to add to what fun we had tonight with GPTF and, uh, does it make it easier tonight?
I will, uh, I will report on, um, highway department activities. Uh, they are watering trees and fireworks along Main Street, which is, you know, above the usual duties. Assisted with the, the fireworks, um, water department, two water main breaks in the East Side River Road, uh, the contractor with the Hudson View Park Culver replacement project, the contractor with the Crosswalk project in the Broadway inherited chill, which should have mentioned that that's underway. I'm very excited to see that.
Yeah.
Uh, they're painting lines and crosswalks, defending catch basins and filling potholes into the summer. Uh, the water departments, as they always are, reading water meters, summer maintenance of the water department facilities, finished the first phase of the Halsey Pond Dam project, working on hydrant maintenance list, assisted the contractor placing a T in valves on Hudson View Park and East Sunny Side Lane Park, the Culver project, broke, repaired a broken service line on West Clinton Avenue, installed four inch valve for senior center sprinkler system, installed five wet taps as part of the Hudson View Culver project, repaired six inch water main break on Erie Street, installed a new eight inch water valve on River Road and Bridge Street, which is going to help with the water main breaks down there. Uh, solved six inch valve for the River View Road booster station, repaired water leak on River View Road, uh, repaired fire hydrant on the corner of Hudson View Park and East Sunny Side Lane, sewer blockage in Richmond Hill cleared with the sewer jet, paint fire hydrants and jetting sewers as part of routine maintenance.
The annual Independence Day fireworks display was a very success. Special thanks to the Irvington Fire and Police Departments and the IBAC for keeping everyone safe and special thanks to the face committee. Save the date Rocktoberfest two thousand nineteen is scheduled for Saturday, June twenty eighth. No fireworks.
Correct.
No.
Okay.
It's in Matheson Park. Sponsorships are available for this great event. Contact Joe Archino. Irvington Woods Committee Summer Days Program at, uh, the O'Hara Nature Center drew over two hundred and fifty people for four days of activities. I was up there on Sunday and it was great. There were people there for the first time, didn't know it existed before. Uh, and that's part of the idea, you know, is just getting people to realize what we have up there. Uh, please visit the nature center, see the beauty of our demonstration gardens. Repairs to the tennis courts at Memorial Park will continue through the week and into the next week, depending on weather. We'll be back in, excuse me, in action no later than July twenty second. The repairs have had to be rescheduled several times since last spring, so we need to try to get this done now. Care of trees. We'll resume work on trees in scenic Hudson Park tomorrow, possibly Friday. The O'Hara Nature Center, the O'Hara Foundation High School Summer Basketball League continues playing every Monday through Thursday through the end of July. The, the good weather means a lot of park visitors. Please do your part by disposing of any bottles or cans in the recycling bins and the old trash garbage pails. This includes Memorial, scenic Hudson and Matheson Parks. Everyone using the Irvington Woods Park and Halsey Pond, please carry in, carry out, leave no trace behind. Please remember that dogs must be on leash when in the Irvington Woods or Halsey Pond. It's the law. We say this every meeting, but, uh, I would mention that there are police officers who, I believe there were four summonses given over the weekend.
How did they name dog costumes?
I'm not sure the costumes, but we can't tell them what the costumes are, then they wouldn't be on the costumes. Uh, but I would say summonses are being given, so please , uh, handle law. It is the law.
The village administrator.
So, uh, you know, we've been doing our best to keep the community updated on the, on the timing of the various, um, construction projects that are going on around the village. It's obviously the high season for all of that, uh, not the least of which is the, uh, restoration of the pavement on Main Street, the final restoration. So, um, what is ultimately being done with Main Street is that approximately, uh, well, they're, they're filling in with concrete right now, pinned concrete, which is the way the rest of Main Street is constructed. Um, the, uh, the trench that they worked in back in the fall. Once that's complete and they're making pretty good progress on it, um, they will, that whole, about a third of the roadway from not quite the center line, but there's a, there's a seam out there, if you look at it, uh, over to the, to the north curve of Main Street will be milled and, including the new concrete that they just poured and, uh, and then paved. Um, the only exception to that is the area in front of the war monument from just beyond the brick crosswalk to just below the painted crosswalk, which isn't very well painted anymore. Um, that whole, that will be done curb to curb in front of the monument. That was a prior agreement with Con Ed. Um, side streets will be done, but only to the extent, you know, that they disturbed going in and you can see very clearly where they disturbed last year. Um, that's probably about a two to three weeks more of, of work, but hopefully a little less, we'll say.
But it's pinned concrete.
So, um, all of Main Street has a, I don't know, twen, eight inch thick concrete. It's very thick, maybe twelve. I'm not even sure. Um, and, you know, they had to cut through that to excavate, to, to do the main. Uh, they, they now are, uh, cutting this concrete flush, drilling holes on either side and inserting, uh, metal rods.
Metal pins.
Yeah. And then they're pouring the concrete so that it, you know, the, the new concrete will be pinned.
Right.
And fastened to the concrete nearby.
Also can lift it at a different rate.
Right.
Effectively.
Right, yeah. Minimize that. It will collapse, yeah, whichever.
I saw them do that. I was trying, drilling sideways and going.
They're missing.
But now.
That's our standard detail for excavating on Main Street. I mean, it's, you're not going to put back something that's inferior.
Right.
We can try to fix it. Right.
Trust.
I mean, they wanted to because it would, you know, the, the area that they're doing this in is really in the parking area, so it's less traveled. But we just, you know, that, that's just an imitation for a problem.
Right, no, it's true. Any update about South Buckout Street?
They, they're replacing the main in South Buckout and it looks to me, I haven't heard a final word, but I believe the field people have been instructed they're working in the road. So they're not replacing the, the existing main along South Buckout Street is in the grassy shoulder on the west side of South Buckout Street, so right in front of the co-op apartments. And, uh, that's where the main is currently. Con Ed originally wanted to replace it in just about the same spot so that the service line connection or the easier and cheaper for them.
Have to dig, just dig now.
Yeah, and, but it would have.
Trees.
But there's a lot of trees in the area and it, yeah, so we had a, we had a little bit of a conversation about that and, and it does appear that they're, they're staying in the road.
It looks like it worked out. Sounds like it worked out.
Yes.
I don't think it's yet.
Well, we're keeping an eye on it. I mean, if they start digging in the, in the shoulder, we're going to know about it.
Yeah, and we'll be starting here in.
Hopefully.
Sauce.
Well, well, Caesar will know about it anyway, so.
Yeah, I don't know whether.
Yeah, exactly.
That's it?
Yeah, so that's, uh, you know, there's project on Riverview Road, um, near Victor and Victor Drive and Carlo Lane, right, along there? That's, that's the booster tank that's being installed. Had a little issue with a, with, with a, uh, small main that was, that was broken up there, they, they did have to cut some water. It had to be repaired as a result of the construction, but the neighbors who were affected were on the, yeah, what was going on?
I haven't heard.
Yeah, yeah, they, yeah, we, we, there's only a few houses there, I mean, not to minimize it, but it's a relatively small area. Um, Hudson View Park's continuing, um.
Any snacks there yet, or?
Um, I mean, there's, there's some, there's some extras because of, um, uh, sewer, sewer mains being installed in the same trench as water mains in the past, which was a common thing to do, but no longer allowed, and the surveys never showed that, and, you know, so you open it up and now you have to make a wider trench, so it's, there's some extras for that. We have contingency in our, in our budget so far, that's, that's adequate, so.
Do you actually have to change the placement?
Yes.
Do you have to move a certain distance apart now?
Health Department has to get involved and approve all that, yeah.
What is going on on West Clinton? Is that village or is that Con Ed?
That's Con Ed, but it, it's, that project and the South Buckout project's all one, one project, basically. The, um, the reason that project was done is because we are planning to pave West Clinton, that's in our paving plan for this year. When we gave that list to Con Edison, which they've requested from us, is to have a chance to review our upcoming paving projects.
Oh, right.
So that they can address any leaks. Well, they had a very large, as you saw, a very large project planned there, they accelerated as a. So that's why that project got done fairly hastily, uh, but we're gonna be following that up. I don't know the timing of the paving just yet, but it should be.
So that was a gas line?
Yeah, that's, that's a, yeah, very similar project to what was done on Main Street. Yeah.
Village third treasurer's report?
Okay, we finished our June, uh, tax collection for the first half village taxes. Uh, we implemented a new software program, uh, June 1st, and after a learning curve, um, everything went very smoothly.
Correct.
Uh, we implemented the online tax payments for residents, and I'd say over 10% of the residents took advantage of that. So it was, um, relatively strong considering, uh, plus, almost half of the residents have an escort anyway, so that made, yeah.
That's true.
So it was, it was very well.
Hundred percent, really.
Right, you know, of the available households, yeah.
So, uh, that was well received.